Do with a Zoom call. Okay, I think we've got everybody. Thank you so much for tuning in this afternoon. My name's Sue Williams and I'm one of the PPMA board members. So it's my job to welcome you all here to our Sparkle and Shine session. In a couple of minutes, I'm going to be handing over to the gang from Leeds, who were our award winners at the PPMA Awards earlier in the year with their EDR Equality, Divisional Inclusion submission. It's a really interesting session. I hope you get a lot out of it. Before we do that, we're also having a quick word from our all important sponsors over at Crown Commercial Services. We are really grateful for their ongoing support. But I need to do a few little bits of housekeeping. So the first piece of housekeeping is to try and stay on mute. That just helps us with the background noise. We do use the chat box and one of the benefits of coming on live is that you can shape the conversation with that chat box. So you are welcome to make comments, suggestions or ask questions in that chat box throughout the session. We'll try our best to pick them up. If we don't pick them up, we will come back to you. So it is really important if you want to make a comment or you've got some information you can share, that's really, really useful. We do record the sessions and they are available after this session, but none of your faces will be on there or it's literally just the speakers. So you haven't got to worry about confidentiality, but it really helps us spread the words and particularly with such an important topic. If you can let other people know that the recordings are available if you wanted them to look at it. So without further ado, if I could hand over to Lucy, are you speaking on behalf of Crown?
I am, yes. Can you hear me okay? Hi. So hi, everyone. I'm going to apologise as well. I'm actually on my mobile because our Zoom didn't seem to want to work with our system. So I apologise if it seems a bit bouncy. I'm holding it up. I'm also on today in replacement of our Commercial Director, Tracy Clark. Again, apologies because of technical problems. She's not attending. But I'm Lucy Flint. I work for Crown Commercial Service as a strategic business manager and I support on our external perspectives and partnerships within our I and D strategy at CCS as well. CCS plays an important role in helping the UK public sector save money when buying common goods and services. But more importantly, in this context, we're also a public sector organisation on our own I and D journey. And like many others on the call today, we want to take the opportunities that we can to hear and share examples of best practice in this space. It's really important to us as well. And for those of you that probably do know, 2020 is the Civil Service Year of Inclusion and CCS is very proud to have sponsored the PM, PPMA, sorry, I and D Award. We need to take these opportunities and we need to work together more and more. It's crucially important that we continue to do that, to share, learn and reapply with pride. And ultimately, for me, I think it's about supporting that united drive together for stronger outcomes within I and D. It's very important. So a huge congratulations again to the winners, Leeds City Council. Very much, yeah, well done. Very much looking forward to learning more from you today.
Great. Thank you, Lucy. And Andy, over to you and your team from Leeds. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Sue. Good afternoon, everybody. It's really nice to be here. Also, thanks to you, Lucy, for the sponsorship from Crown Commercial Services. That's really appreciated. And thank you to you, Sue. We're delighted to be here from Leeds. So obviously, we're really pleased to have picked up the PPMA Award for Diversity and Inclusion. And we're really happy to share with you our story. And that story is predominantly around our staff networks. Many of you may not have come across me before. My name's Andy Dogman and I'm the Chief HR Officer for Leeds City Council, only been in post for about a year. So all the good work we're going to share with you, I can't really claim much credit for it, is mainly the work of the other people from Leeds who are going to talk about it. So I'm really just here as a bit of a fraud, but I do want to kickstart a little bit about the context and a little bit about some of the broader work we're doing in this really important space of diversity and inclusion. And fingers crossed, we do have some slides which, Grace, you've got. And if the technology works, we will see if we can get those up on screen. Excellent. I'm hoping everybody can see those. Yep, we can. Brilliant. That's always a relief. So I'm going to be joined by Emma, who is the HR Service Manager, who's just waving at you there. So Emma's going to specifically talk to you a little bit about the case study, which is about our staff network transformation. And I'm really pleased we're also joined by Wazim, who's on the call too. And he's a key colleague of ours, working specifically on the BAME staff network, but has a broader role across as well. So really pleased that they're going to take you through our staff network story. So as I said, I'm going to start the story with a little bit more about context, if I may. So Grace, if we can move to the next slide, that'd be great. So just in terms of the context, I'm not going to say much about this, but like any good local government organisation, we've got a people's strategy. And that's that big wheel you can see on the right. So that's our five-year plan that we launched about a month or so before Covid hit us. So it quickly became, if you like, I suppose I was going to say redundant, but not at all actually, because we did pull out quite a lot of the key themes during the Covid months. But that people's strategy, and I won't take you through because we don't have the time to do it, but two things really to share with you on that bigger, broader context, which is our vision. So as a large city council, we have a very simple people vision, which is to be the best place to work. I think we already are, but then there's another 15,000 staff that we directly employ and another 12,000 from our school. So we've got more work to do to make sure that that employee experience for all of our workforce is the best it possibly could be. I guess the hard part is answering the question, so how, how are we going to do that? And as you can see from that big arrow pointing to the centre of our strategy, it's very much about encouraging all of our staff to be their best. And that's really where the diversity and inclusion bit comes in. Because what we said there is we really want individuals, and you probably can't see because the typeface is a bit too small, so apologies. But in the middle, it says there about valuing everybody, who they are as an individual. So really what we're trying to say as an organisation, when it comes to difference and diversity, is that we don't just want to safeguard and support those protective characteristics. We don't just want to comply with the legislation through policy development or good governance, whatever it may be. What we really want people to do is we are really trying to actively promote difference in its broadest possible sense. So that's difference through knowledge, through skills, through experience. Obviously, difference through, of course, social differences, whether it's gender, ethnic origin, but equally different behaviours, different approaches. And I think our view from our strategy is very much saying that if you enable people to be who they are, then they can bring their full and best self into the workplace and unlock, if you like, that latent talent. But also as an organisation, we really believe in Leeds, that if you combine all of those differences in people and bring them together in a team, then those teams full of that difference sort of build in and lock in that creativity, the innovation, problem solving, challenge, you name it, are making it a much stronger, better organisation. So what we've really done is put that sense of difference and diversity and inclusion right at the heart of our five-year people's strategy. And as you can see, the bottom of the slide, I think there's some truth to the adage about diversity, that it isn't something that you do, it's a way that you do something. So what we want to share with you is that way we try to go about doing that here at Leeds. And perhaps one of the most important things we're trying to do as an organisation is do it in partnership, do it in collaboration, not just as an HR function as a team, but with a whole range of different groups and networks. And that's really where the staff network story comes in. So I'm going to pause and then let Emma then take you through a bit more details about the staff networks. Thank you.
Remember to unmute myself. Thank you. Can we have the next slide, please, Grace? Oh, thank you. Yeah, and I'll go through slides quite quickly. But yeah, so really to set this work in the context of the ongoing work that we've been undertaking. So this is, you know, to sound a bit cheesy and a bit X factor, it is all part of a journey. It's quite hard to isolate in a way. But you know, some of the things we'd already done, making those annual transparent public statements of progress, things like our annual equality report, which we have to do, changing corporate processes to remove barriers. So one example of that is bringing our budget for assistive technology into one place. So it removed that barrier of services or managers having to find the budget for individuals' assistive technology. And that's an example that's worked really well. And then, of course, we always seek external benchmarking recognition, things like Stonewall and Business Disability Forum. So we've got all that going on. And this is about then how we strengthen the staff networks partnership to really add to those processes. So can I have the next slide, please, Grace? Thank you. Sorry, see if all the animations work as well. So what we wanted really was, as it says, a vibrant, thriving partnership of our networks. So we've had networks for quite a number of years and they are based around protected characteristics. And what we wanted to do really is bring them all together more to work together as partnership. So key things I suppose to know about the partnership is that they're led by volunteers from the workforce and by the workforce and they work for employees. So it's a real peer-to-peer support that they function, that they carry out. So because they're volunteers, they're people with experience about interest in inclusion matters, so they can come together. So you get those real-life lived experience stories coming through. And then through this partnership, we're able to amplify their voice within the organisation. So people who maybe hadn't been heard or would have difficulty being heard were able to either speak up themselves or through their network leads. Next slide, please. So a couple of really practical things, I suppose. We get asked quite a lot about our networks. We get asked about the infrastructure really around them. What I'd say is it's minimal, actually, which I think is one of the keys to the successes. It's not overly bureaucratic. We don't have lots of formal structures around it. The financial investment is, I've put only £2,500,000 a year between all the networks. I'm sure they'd like a lot more than that. And that's what they tell me. So but you know, that's the budget we have and they do an awful lot with that investment. I think the most key, the key thing really is that support from senior leaders and elected members. It really comes from the top. We have a monthly meeting with the Director of Resources and Housing with all this network leads. And they have that direct channel into directors and the chief executive. So it's real visible leadership. They get involved in all the events. Like I say, the leads have a direct channel into those senior leaders. And Wassim will talk a bit more about some of the work that has been carried out with the BAME network and our corporate leadership team in a bit. But yeah, some of the practicalities, they can request up to eight hours per month. Again, I think we know that the leads and the network members do a lot more than that. And we work really closely from HR with the networks, with the leads in particular, to discuss the issues that are arising. The role is to facilitate the work and to unblock things in the organisation where we might need to do so and help people through that. Next slide, please. I feel like Chris Witty saying that. So yeah, just to say, it's gone from strength to strength. We've got seven networks and they work together focusing on their shared priorities. We've seen particularly during Covid that they really have worked together. It's increasing as a sort of understanding of intersectionality improves. And as Andy said at the beginning there, with our people's strategy and wanting everyone to be the best and being the whole self to work, there's the recognition that no one fits in one box, you know, there's lots. So we see the BAME network working really closely with our Women's Voice network and our LGBT network to capture that and do some really good stuff there and be really influential on how we approach things. Again, I'll leave that to Wassim to talk through the really good example of that with the BAME network. Next, please. I feel read, but I don't know what to say. So yeah, so we've got this combination of grassroots advocacy with a direct line into the senior leadership offices and members. And we can't forget the trade unions as well. So really helping us to connect all those relationships up across the organisation, really raise the profile of the agenda. And in participating in this work, lots of people is creating better understanding of each other within the organisation and an ability to share lived experiences and have those honest conversations about what people's experience is like in the organisation. Next, please. Thank you. So just to end really, a few stats, I suppose. We've got over a thousand colleagues involved in the network. So they're the people who are members of the network and help deliver the work. Example there, I mentioned the assistive technology and working with the assistive technology partner. We've helped 142 people. And we've got over 600 mental health first aiders trained. Our DOOM network in particular has grown from 59 followers to 525 followers on Twitter. And I think what we've seen since the Covid pandemic is all of the networks get much more confident with social media. We've got Facebook groups for the different networks, which are run by the networks. Our mental health network livestreams now into Facebook and holds live events, which is really great to see. Just other channels for peer support. We've got those 26 allies who regularly attend the DOOM network as well. Next, please. So yeah, so lots of events as a way of raising the profile and the voice. So show races in the red cards is an annual event we now hold. International Women's Day, we've been running for quite some time. And that's an event for the leader of the council and it's a citywide event, which the Women's Voice network are heavily involved with, as well as HR. We had over 150 managers attend our staff benefits event, part of National Inclusion Week. And that's been really successful and the networks did that, put a lot of work into that. And this week, this year even, it was particularly successful, even though it was virtually. There's a real need for it. And our assistive technology roadshow, again, 160 attendees. So there's a real demand in the organisation for what they're delivering. Yep, next, please. Thank you. So yeah, so the measure, the main measure, our engagement scores have remained high. We asked the question as a benchmark, if you asked a friend to give you a score, what would it be? So that's remained at seven and a half, 7.5 out of 10 for a number of years now, despite austerity and despite all the challenges. And I've included a particularly lovely quote that we have there, about truly love working for Leeds City Council. And as Andy says, that's at the heart, you know, being your best is at the heart of our people's strategy. So comments like that really help bring to life, you know, where we're on track with that, as well as that numerical quantitative score. Next, please. Thank you. So yeah, the engagement survey is telling us the LGBT plus staff have higher levels of satisfaction. Same level of satisfaction, whether they have religious faith or not. Offline staff slightly more satisfied than online staff. And the BAME staff and British white staff were telling us they have similar levels of satisfaction. However, I think the past months have been a reminder really, never to sit on your laurels really with regard to this and think just because this is what the survey says, there's not more to explore and look into with regard to the experience of colleagues in our workforce. And with that, I think Wassim can probably speak best to that and take us through the experience as leader of the BAME staff network.
Thanks, Emma. Hi, everyone. So as Emma said, this has been an incredibly challenging year and particularly for our BAME communities. And one of the things I wanted to highlight was with the impact of Covid-19, we recognised very early on that we needed to engage with our staff and create spaces where they could share how they were feeling. And everyone in this call will have heard about the disproportionate impact on BAME communities, this is in the national news at the time. And we were really conscious that we really needed to engage with our staff and understand how they were feeling. And actually, it wasn't a surprise, but it was really helpful in informing the organisation's response. And I think what we did this year and what has been really highlighted this year is that we've really acted and played out our values of treating people fairly, working with that team lead's approach and responding to the concerns staff have highlighted. And we picked up in a session earlier on this year, where over 100 colleagues joined around the impact of Covid-19 and how that was impacting them, that anxiety of what would that mean for them if they were asked to return to work? They were really concerned about that. And I think that example in itself highlights that actually the power and potential of staff networks and that core production collaborative effort, working with key services within your organisations and senior leaders to come up with solutions that actually address the concerns of our staff. And one of the things we did very quickly on is work with HR and health and safety colleagues to strengthen our risk assessment tools, recognising that the BAMEs, reflecting those BAME staff concerns within that. And I think that speaks to what staff networks are really there for. We really need to create those safe spaces, amplifying the voices and importantly, the lived experiences of our BAME communities. And I say communities because I think we all need to recognise that we're not a homogenous group. We all have our individual experiences and it's important for organisations to understand the complexity of the communities. We need to understand the Black experience in the council, Asian experience, other ethnic minority groups, because until we understand those individual experiences, we can't respond to the key concerns that matter to themselves. And Emma mentioned bringing your whole self to work, that is massively important. The potential of organisation, you spend the majority of your time during the week at work. That's a place where you know you need to feel comfortable and safe to be yourself. And I think what we've done, working as staff network partnerships, is creating spaces where we can have conversations about being BAME and LGBT plus within the workplace, working with the Women's Voice network on issues like career progression and development that matter to BAME women within the organisation, talking about BAME mental health, which is a real taboo subject, but we really need to talk about that within our workplaces. And also working with the disability network to have those conversations about those who identify as BAME and disabled within the organisation. So it's really amplifying those voices and lived experiences. And importantly, using them to inform the responses of our organisation. One of the things we did recently was, and I think Black History Month this year really was, you know, we had a series of events throughout the week focusing on issues like health and wellbeing, being black in the council, food and culture. I think what that really highlighted was that we really need to use the opportunity of Black History Month to educate as well and share experiences of our staff. So we covered issues like unconscious bias. We actually had a week where we celebrated food and culture, celebrating that difference and diversity with the organisation and really using the opportunity to actually inform and engage with staff, all including our non-BAME colleagues within the conversations we're having, recognising the importance that we're all on this journey together. We all have to work together to come to with those solutions and address those concerns that have been highlighted. But one of the also profound events of this year has been those wider equality issues. And I think the murder of George Floyd really, you know, prompted and highlighted the kind of trauma that our BAME communities have been going through for decades. And I think what we really needed to do was create spaces where they could have the discussions and really trying to understand further how they are feeling and how those events have impacted them. And actually, what came out of those conversations was really difficult conversations and challenging conversations about racial discrimination experiences that they have faced. And what we really need to do was respond to that, work with our senior leaders to come up with solutions, working together to address that. And that's where the BAME CLT action plan came in. We, you know, we requested to engage more with our senior leaders, listening to the concerns of our BAME network colleagues. And actually, it has been a really important piece of work this year to really progress some of those key actions. So I mentioned risk assessments, but we're also focusing on key areas like increasing confidence within our recruitment processes, looking at things like diversity of panels, but also increasing confidence within our grievance processes as well. And with that, we've seen some very early successes around risk assessments, but also seeing increased BAME representation of a pool of decision makers as well, which is really early signs. I want to emphasise, there's a lot of work still to do, but it's a really good start to build on for the next year and have that continued relentless focus within the new year to further progress those experiences of our staff. One of the other things that was really profound and really important this year was a joint statement from the organisation, signed by our chief executive, by myself on behalf of the network, but also importantly by the leader of our council, working in a local authority, that political engagement and endorsement of this agenda is extremely important. And that statement has had a profound impact and will have a profound impact because, and I've highlighted in the presentation, the opening statement, "We stand together against all forms of racism and inequality in our council and our city. This is a time for action and change." And what that statement really does is emphasise that we will be open and honest, capturing those values within the organisation, having those challenging and uncomfortable conversations and not ignoring the hard truths, but also importantly, recognising that everyone in the organisation has a part to play on this agenda, that team lead's approach. We all can work together, come up with the solutions together and make that difference to our communities, which ultimately improves the experiences of everyone with the organisation. And I think also one of the important things that the organisation is really open to is that we haven't got all the answers. We, you know, we're not the perfect organisation and we need to open ourselves up to sharing best practice. And that partnership working has really developed on the BAME agenda to the West Yorkshire and Harrogate Health and Care Partnership, made up of organisations like Leeds City Council, but also NHS organisations and VCS organisations, has really made a difference this year. And we're engaged as a council, through myself as the network lead, in making a difference on a key ambition of the system, which is around increasing the diversity of leadership within organisations and the system. And one of the things that has come out from that is a co-produced development programme for BAME senior leaders within the system, the BAME Fellowship Programme. And I'm happy to share more information on that, but that has been profound and really highlighted actually that we don't just look internally to make the changes. We also outward look facing and want to make the difference beyond our organisations, working together with other partners within the system and beyond that. I wanted to also share a personal reflection that actually this has been a profoundly important and really emotional kind of year for me personally. You know, and I think it really highlights that actually the organisations are a key part of that. Earlier this year, I came out publicly as a British, Asian gay man and that's been really profound for me. And I think organisations are, it's incumbent on organisations to create those safe spaces where we can bring our whole selves to work. For a very long time, I could be myself at work, but it's also helped me to to also come out of work and be myself, be my whole self and be that open and honest to myself, but also by my identity as well. And that's the potential of what staff networks, working with our senior leaders and organisations can do. If we can make a massive difference, not just on the institutional level, but at the individual level, and that's the potential of difference that we can make. And that's why it's worth investing in our staff networks.
Wow, Wassim. We don't very often get goosebumps on these kind of sessions, but you've just given me goosebumps then because I think that's amazing that you can share that level of insight for us on a session like this. So thank you. Andy, we're rapidly running out of time. Did you want to come in and wrap up?
Yeah, I think there's one slide left, Grace, which is this. And I'm just really mindful of time, Sue, so I'll do it in 10 seconds, I promise.
Awesome.
It's really just repeating, I guess, of folks and what Wazim has just ended with. So obviously, thinking about the future. So obviously, thinking about the future where we are, I started talking a bit about the context, but as Wazim said, it's changed completely because of Covid, new ways of working, all sorts of uncertainties about finances, working pattern, working place. Just to repeat again, that big issue about urgency, we really do feel it in